Come in, board please. You play the religion? I play the allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I think we have two people for public input. The first is Jeff Walker.
Can I come up here?
Yes, please.
On behalf of the tackle board, I want to pray for the city leaders and just thank you for that privilege. Let's pray. Lord Jesus, we thank you tonight for our city leaders, those who commit time and energy to just serving us, and we just pray you would bless them, bless their, bless the city workers, bless the law enforcement, bless all who are in leadership in our city. We thank you again for them and for their time and effort, and we pray that you would give them grace, that you would give them courage, that you would give them wisdom as they lead us, especially give them wisdom for their agenda items tonight and help them to make good decisions that will bless the community. And I just commit all city workers to you and do it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Jeff.
Second person would be Steve Plowell.
Thank you, Mayor Ashton and council members. I was here two weeks ago and presented with you a resolution and tribute for John W. Peterson. Well, it was 100 years ago today that he was born, and I very much appreciate you considering that. I went online this afternoon, looked a little bit, and I found songs from at least Korea and China and several other languages that I couldn't understand anything of, and I, one of them was maybe French, but it didn't sound French either. But anyway, of his music, including during the whole COVID epidemic, the most recent I saw on there was February of 2020. And so those songs and presented many languages around the world, and it's still accurate right now. Anyway, and then this is what, 15 years since he actually died in 2006? So that's, again, that's quite a tribute, and I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments, mayor.
Hearing none, all right. The next item on the mayor's report is a proclamation about John W. Peterson. I would like to read it at this time. This is a tribute to John W. Peterson. Whereas John W. Peterson was born November 1, 1921, on a farm south of Linsburg, Kansas, to parents of Swedish lineage, and whereas John W. Peterson considered Linsburg his home and spent his summers in the Linsburg area with an aunt and uncle even after his family had moved to Salina where his mother was able to find a job during the Great Depression, and whereas John W. Peterson served in the U.S. Army Air Corps during World War II as a pilot flying the China Burma Pump, and whereas John W. Peterson was one of the most prolific writers and composers of sacred music, having written more than 1,000 individual songs and hymns, and whereas these songs and hymns include the well-known "It Took A Miracle", "Heaven Came Down", "Sweet Holy Child", "Jesus Lead Me All The Way", "Oh Glorious Love", and whereas John W. Peterson was also one of the most prolific writers and composers of cantatas, having written 35 cantatas, including "Night Of Miracles" and "No Greater Love" among them, and whereas hymns and cantatas written by John W. Peterson have been translated into more than 30 languages and have been and continue to be sung and performed by churches all around the world, and whereas John W. Peterson became the CEO of the gospel music company Singpiration, and whereas during his life, John W. Peterson was nicknamed "The Dean Of Modern Hymn Writers", and in 1986, he was inducted into the Gospel Music Hall of Fame, and whereas John W. Peterson provides an exemplary model and inspiration for the current generation of how one person from a small town in the Smoky Valley can have a tremendous impact on the world. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Linsburg, Kansas, located in the heart of the Smoky Valley, hereby honors John W. Peterson on his 100th birthday by declaring November 1, 2021, as John W. Peterson Day, dated this first day of November, 2021. Motion to approve this, block motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Steve, for persevering there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Few items here. Tomorrow is Election Day. There will be four new councilmen, councilpersons elected and a new mayor, and I think the polls open at 7:00 a.m. in the morning. There are four voting stations here in Linsburg, so hopefully everybody will get out there to vote tomorrow. City Hall will be closed on November the 11th, which is Veterans Day, so pay your utilities on time and you'll be in good shape. And I also want to say a special congratulations to Smoky Valley. This past fall and this, even this past weekend were pretty special for the athletes from there. Our women's volleyball took third in the state. The cross-country boys took third. This is the first time that both boys and girls, I believe, in cross-country made it to the state level. So this has been a pretty exemplary time for them, but I want to say a special thank you, not only to these athletes, but also to their coaches and the parents and the grandparents who support these kids from one side of this state to the other and lots of hot dog feeds and whatever else that they do. So thank you to everybody for representing Linsburg so well. That's the only thing that I have. Are there any other meetings that anybody needs to expose? Hearing none. The consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, Ted, Rossy, Ed.
Yes.
Joey.
Yes.
Blaine.
Yes.
Kirsten.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Egon.
Consent agenda is approved. Are there any appointments?
No appointments.
Glad you're telling.
No report.
Old business?
No old business.
All right. Biosolids pump repair, Chris.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Last month, wastewater staff went to load out sludge and haul liquid, and they had an alarm on the biosolids pump. After checking the necessary items, they pulled the pump, didn't find anything obvious, so they called the people that work on this pump, and they happened to stop by and pick it up, took it down to the shop, did the diagnosis, and found that it needed a, it had a bad seal and needed a new seal kit put in. So they went ahead and were able to find a kit to get it replaced, which was odd in these times of finding parts and pieces. So they went ahead and got that put back together and got the pump back. So we're just looking for a motion to approve the invoice from JCI Industries for the repair of the holding tank sludge pump for $3,725. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we have any backups, like pump?
That pump, we do not have a backup. Most of the pumps in the mixtures out at the wastewater plant, there is some redundancy with switching pumps around. That pump, we do not have a backup. That's the only pump that fits in that tank, and that's the only job it has.
Who lucked out?
Yeah.
Yes.
Joey?
Yep.
Ed?
Yes.
Any other discussion? Motion's through. Rebecca?
Yes.
Recovery program. Egon?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council.
Blaine?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Before you is a motion dealing with paying for or contract with AMR for 2021 out of
Sewer maintenance.
Each year, we contract out to have sewer maintenance done throughout certain areas
the ARPA funds, and this is discussed, I think, throughout the budget process and during
of town. This has been a really, really good program, started shortly before I had started with
the study session. The rulemaking around the ARPA funds includes that any expenditures, one category of expenditures
the first year, and each year we've continued to do that. We used to have anywhere from 12 to 15 sewer backups a year on average.
must respond to the disease and to the harmful consequences of the economic disruption, and
Now if we have one to two, that's, that's a bad year.
we consider this certainly applies here.
So this has been a really good program for us to do.
Part of the, the biggest part of the problem with EMS throughout COVID was didn't have
It's kept up on the trouble areas within town, and then we hit certain other areas just to kind of evolve around town and hit the areas where we want to try and keep an
volunteers, right? And part of that was because their employer said, "We can't, we can't have you exposed."
eye on things. So we're just looking for a motion to approve the quote from Mayor Specialty Services to
So would ask for a motion to approve the expenditure of ARPA funds in the amount of
clean sewers as part of the annual sewer maintenance program for not to exceed price
$187,500 to meet the city's financial obligations under the contract with AMR to provide EMS
of $8,500.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second?
services in order to respond to the harmful consequences of the economic disruptions exacerbated
Second.
Any discussion?
Glad there are so few backups.
by the COVID-19 public health emergencies.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Second? Rick?
Yes.
Second.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Egon?
So I was trying to follow this on the memo that you wrote.
Yes.
So is this, so we've already planned to take the 187,000 out of ARPA and put it into pay this, or is this a change of what we were going to do, and this is additional funding?
Now, this was, this is what staff has contemplated and has discussed.
Since the beginning, like earlier months ago.
Yeah, and we discussed it in a study session as we discussed priorities.
Right, right, okay. I just wasn't sure if this was, if we had gone above costs and this was additional money going into, or this is what we were originally talking about?
This is what we were originally talking about.
All right, any other comments or questions? Hearing none? Rossy?
Ed?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Thank you, Lucas?
Chief?
Hey, everybody. So before you is the fire service honoring policy or stipend. You guys received something about a month ago with the county fire rural district. This is to kind of join with that. Our internal policy has not been revisited, meaning the run and stipend fees haven't been looked at in about 14 years. So the new policy would increase the run fees to be consistent with the county rural fire from 15 for fire runs and training meetings to $20 per event. It also increases the service honoring, which is designed to recognize and reward those active members who have consistently responded on calls and attended both training sessions and meetings throughout the year, and it's based on your years of volunteer service to the Linsburg Fire Department. The service honoring was also created as a tool to both retain those who are experienced firefighters, along with encourage others who are on the force to meet the same requirements. And so with that, I'm asking for a motion to approve the amended city of Linsburg Fire Service Honoring Policy.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion here?
So, I mean, you said that it hasn't increased in 15 years, so are these, I mean, 20, going from 50 to 20 is still not a ton of money, so is that the going rate? I mean, is that what people are willing to accept?
That's what they came to me with and asked for us to review. They understand that there's not a finite amount of money for the city, but they're trying to be reasonable, but also encourage people to want to be part of that service, and they understand it is a volunteer service, but it does take time for them to have to leave what they're doing to go, sometimes spend hours on these events to then come back and try.
Well, I was just looking at the maximum is $100, and then if you've been there more than two years, your maximum is 220. For five minutes, still pretty darn long, so.
Well, as, as their years of service go up, then that stipend does increase if they meet the requirements of showing up to a percentage of calls as well as trainings and meetings.
Yeah, I saw that, it's still just.
I know.
Bless that work.
The Fair Labor Standard Act is, as a volunteer service, you don't, you can't compensate for time. You compensate for inconvenience, and if the amount is too large, if they're no longer considered volunteers, they become employees, and that's the challenge of.
And I had to get that, and I'm not making anything, except to say that $100 a year, but that's, I think that's so well, I'm a volunteer, so.
All right, any other comments?
So moved. Second?
Any discussion here?
So, I mean, you said that it hasn't increased in 15 years, so are these, I mean, 20, going from 50 to 20 is still not a ton of money, so is that the going rate? I mean, is that what people are willing to accept?
That's what they came to me with and asked for us to review. They, they understand that there's not a finite amount of money for the city, but they're trying to be reasonable, but also encourage people to want to be part of that service, and they understand it is a volunteer service, but it does take time for them to have to leave what they're doing to go, sometimes spend hours on these events to then come back and try.
Well, I was just looking at the maximum is $100, and then if you've been there more than two years, your maximum is 220. For five minutes, still pretty darn long, so.
Well, as, as their years of service go up, then that stipend does increase if they meet the requirements of showing up to a percentage of calls as well as trainings and meetings.
Yeah, I saw that, it's still just.
I know.
Bless that work.
Fair Labor Standard Act is, as a volunteer service, you don't, you can't compensate for time. You compensate for inconvenience, and if the amount is too large, if they're no longer considered volunteers, they become employees, and that's the challenge of.
And I had to get that, and I'm not making anything, except to say that $100 a year, but that's, I think that's so well, I'm a volunteer, so.
All right, any other comments? Egon?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
Ed?
Yes.
Joey?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Kirsten?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, next item is 2022 legislative priorities.
In the back, it is the proposed 2022 legislative priorities. The following priorities are the same as they were in 2021. Home role authority, high-quality childcare, tourism as an economic development tool, that internet sales tax collections have been removed since we are now receiving internet or compensating use sales tax on internet sales, property valuation, health, well-being, and quality of life. Additions for 2022 are countywide sales and use tax. Explanation behind that, there's going to be a bill in the '22 legislature that changes the way a countywide sales tax is distributed. Currently, there's a formula that a sales tax that is collected on, or a countywide sales tax that is collected, the county keeps a portion, and the rest is distributed to the cities within the county on a formula based upon valuation and population. There's a battle going on, that's been going on for the last four years, between the city of Atchison and the county of Atchison. Well, they have, keep going back to the state legislature. Legislature has continually said, "Resolve it yourselves, it's not a statewide issue." Well, that's changing, and the outcome is a bill that would allow the county to keep all of the countywide sales tax that is collected, even though 90% of it is generated within the cities within the counties. So that is why that is on there. Library funding, under state statute, for libraries to continue to receive state funding, or each year, the local jurisdiction has to increase the funding to that library each year. Well, now, under the revenue neutral rate, to do that, you're going to have to always invoke revenue neutral rate, you're always going to have to increase the funding because you have two statutes that essentially are butting heads. This is an effort to say that the formula that the state uses is not predicated upon a local increase of dollars to the library. It's up to the local jurisdiction whether they want to increase that funding to the library or not, but it doesn't jeopardize the library's funding from the state. Housing, I mean, as we know, even with stock home estates, we're in a tight housing market. Also, affordable housing is always an issue, trying to expand the opportunities and grants for affordable housing. Tax spending lid. We are no longer operating under a tax lid, but the revenue neutral rate is a revenue, is a, a spending lid. Essentially, on this one, asking for the state legislature to let local governments govern locally and not be mandated on how they are to fund operations. If a local council or commission wants to lower the rate, or the funding, or increase expenditures, you're elected locally by citizens within your community, those decisions are best left to the local government, not to the state. Energy spikes. This is an addition to encourage the state and also federal agencies to continue to investigate and determine who profited and how to prevent those from happening again. And this is in reference to the February winter storm Yuri and the impact it had in the natural gas and the electric markets. Last is filing for office, referencing local office. Used to, for city council, you used to be able to come in and file with the city clerk, and the information was forwarded on to the county clerk. And I can't remember how many years ago that changed. Now you have to go to the county clerk to file. This is to make it easier to file for local city office. I know I have run into two situations where people have wanted, or were planning to file for office, they were wanting to come in here and was close to the filing deadline, and basically they had to scramble and leave work to be able to file before the deadline because it was in the county clerk's office and not in the city office. And this is to encourage, to, to increase the ease of filing and the convenience, and hopefully to encourage candidates to file. And the items that are being, from '21 to '22, as deletions are the tax lid repeal, it's been replaced by the revenue neutral rate. Internet sales tax collections have been removed because of greater compensating use in that budget timeline. The issue there is, I mean, if you're going to adopt a budget without exceeding the revenue neutral rate, August is the deadline to have your budget adopted. If you're going to exceed, then it's September. The reason it's not in, or being removed is because there are times when, if you address a statute, you, you open it up to potentially more onerous. Things putting into a bill at this point in time felt in a non-detection year for the state legislature, probably better off to leave that particular issue alone. EMS hospital funding, really is referring to Medicare to, to increase funding for EMS and hospital. The likelihood of it even seeing daylight in this legislature, or this '22 legislative session is not very strong. There's just not the political push behind it. Police reform was, was really strong, that's been completely, and really was talking about funding of police departments, plus some other things. That has been removed from discussions and will not be an item that is on the state legislative agenda. The recommended motion is to approve the 2022 city of Linsburg legislative priorities.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion here?
So what does this mean for us if we approve this and we acknowledge these are priorities? I mean, what does that do for us?
Well, from a staff perspective, this means that we follow this as a guideline when we lobby on behalf of the city. These are the issues we represent to our legislators. We also provide it to our advocacy firm, which is, we just met with during study session, Federico Durs Consulting Group. We share it with legislators, we share it with the governor's office, so that they're aware of what our priorities are for the coming year. But it really provides the opportunity for staff to have direction that this is where we're going to focus our efforts on issues that, that come up, and also for our lobbyist firm.
It's looked upon very favorably when we go to the State House to City Hall Day, and you can just hand this, and I remember Rick Wilborn saying, "I wish I could talk to everybody and they need to do this." He said, "This is so neat and clean, and it's right there, and I'm not sitting there taking notes in our conversation. We can actually have conversation because it's well presented to him." So I think it's a really good, good statement. We do that.
Thank you. And one other thing real quick is, there are several of those that were added that are of interest. One of them in particular, the energy spikes.
Yes.
Situation, which we remember well. What kind of traction do you feel like that will have, or if you have any insight in terms of addressing that and investigating that a little bit?
The, the big, the big driver in, in the energy spikes was the cost of natural gas at the wellhead. And in the natural gas industry, in the electric industry, it's, it's fully regulated. Federal Energy Regulatory Commission is the overriding body, then you have the Southwest Power Pool that deals with transmission, so there's several organizations that, or entities that, that regulate that particular industry because they are, electric providers are legalized monopolies. I mean, everybody has its territory that they, they serve. Natural gas is not regulated at the wellhead, and that's where the price is set. Once it's in the pipeline, the pipeline's regulated, everything beyond that point is regulated. The price spikes happened as it was being marketed at the wellhead. The natural gas industry, particularly those in the, the production side of, of natural gas are, are pushing back. One of the things that is being looked at, or I shouldn't say being looked at, that's unfair, that's an overstatement, being discussed is the idea of price caps, meaning, like in the stock market, if you have extreme increases or particularly extreme drops, trading will suspend. Of course, we're talking about something that in the dead of winter, or that you, you can't suspend trading, but can you, can you, if a price drops X percent, can it, can it be capped, or it increases X percent, can it be capped there for a period of time? Because within 72 hours, natural gas went from about $3 per MMBTU to over $600 per MMBTU. And that's because there wasn't any type of cap. That doesn't mean that the cap's permanent. It just means that for a period of time, it caps it at that price. In the electric side of things, on the Southwest Power In the electric side of things, on the Southwest Power Pool, there are price caps, but they're called soft caps. In other words, the price has to stop here unless you can show there's a cost driver that's making that, you're selling your electric, your energy below cost. Well, with these natural gas prices, that was pretty easy to do. So then the next soft cap goes in, and it just, you know, for energy in the Southwest Power Pool, looking at $35 per megawatt hour, that there were, at times, it was $4,400 per megawatt hour. So the idea of, you know, people say, "Well, you know, people need to be reimbursed." It would be great, but to unwind that is going to be extremely difficult. I was in a conversation, or a group phone call with American Public Power, and one of the people on the call was an attorney with California Joint Action Agency, and he was an attorney with the Joint Action Agency during the California energy crisis. And he said, "It took 10 years for that thing to get settled." And he said, "Yeah, the refineries issued, that flows to the federal government, but any of the unwinding of the overcharges, things like that, no one ever," because he says, "To unwind, you can't, it's too difficult to follow how to figure out how to unwind it by the time it goes through all the different marketers and providers and all of that." So.
All right. That was quite a long answer, so.
Well, yeah, it was quite a long ordeal, and it's.
Do we have a motion on?
We have a.
Thank you very much. Okay. All those that approved the 2022 City of Linsburg legislative priorities, say aye.
Aye.
Was opposed? It is passed. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Rick?
Mayor, I move we go into executive session to discuss matters related to non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 754319B1 for 30 minutes. The open meeting will resume at 7:32 PM in Council Chambers.
Do I have a motion to approve this? So.
Second.
Was it a C I?
Aye.
I'll let you go.
It's fine.
I don't really think you could do much about it. You could maybe have a lot of record conversation with it. This is why I don't want to touch it. It's a great thing.
I don't think you could do much about it. You could maybe have a lot of record conversation with it. This is why I don't want to touch it. It's a great thing.
I don't think you could do much about it. You could maybe have a lot of record conversation with it. This is why I don't want to touch it.
I don't think you could do much about it. You could maybe have a lot of record conversation with it. This is why I don't want to touch it. It's a great thing.
I don't think you could do much about it. You could maybe have a lot of record conversation with it. This is why I don't want to touch it. It's a great thing. I don't think you could do much about it. You could maybe have a lot of record conversation with it. This is why I don't want to touch it. It's a great thing. I don't think you could do much about it. You could maybe have a lot of record conversation with it. This is why I don't want to touch it. It's a great thing. I don't think you could do much about it. You could maybe have a lot of record conversation with it. This is why I don't want to touch it. It's a great thing. I don't think you could do much about it. You could maybe have a lot of record conversation with it. This is why I don't want to touch it. It's a great thing. I don't think you could do much about it.
Let's play something more Hollywood.
I thought just, Rose and I thought Roseberry had a little burger and I'd like this. He needed to make sure the funeral over there for him. About that, you know, they got a crazy, wow, painting for five hundred. It was just, I don't know. But really, like, that's what we need to help.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot, there's some online, some on the telephone.
Yeah. We kept yesterday afternoon.
Are you over the...
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're talking Rainbow Society, we're not talking...
I see, I just wanted to...
Are you recording this?
Yes, yeah, we're on...
Yeah, that's okay.
Shop for neighbors.
Fair enough, fair enough, I just...
Go!
Yeah, we just didn't see...
I got nicer stuff. Some mother got a deal. She was leaving work. Thing. And I think monkey, and she's just like, I've been winning at bridge tonight. Now I'm going, what the hell's going on there? Can't talk to Greg?
Sure.
Just a, just a...
I wouldn't run away.
Oh, okay.
Well, in the... Check small. It worked, first time. I never did it before, first time. That's a good question. I mean, I'm serious.
Yeah, so you guys, you're really, really...
I'm because it... It's other than... It's, it's just official trips from one hundred dollars to even estimate maybe that budget. Yeah, for one hundred, two hundred, maybe it's a...
It's a lot.
Yes, yeah. There's a football back in December because we're trying to make sure that all of that, because we don't know all of it. But because we still have outstanding bill of service. And so, we want to do all of this. But it will be for me, yes, so we can get all that ready, capture it there. Would you, would you have a place called, how many people do I have here? You have to go, and then there's the other one. I just made a list.
Okay, you had a good one. You're welcome.
Turn it down, sorry.
Have they started?
Yeah, they've started, it's eleven forty in the first. Kansas City has the ball at the, it's like the Giants thirty.
I'm only at twelve minutes and six seconds, don't ruin for me.
Is yours four on the game yet?
No, zero, zero.
Looks cold out there.
Oh my God.
Through the interception.
We were third goal at five.
Yeah.
He forced it in there, it was hit, batted up in the air, and Giants came down with it.
Oops. Intercepted again?
Yeah. It was intercepted, yes, Giants could, down there, roll that.
I think that is salary.
The three, we see, were right in the line, and he threw to the deepest one instead of the first one, that, trying to side the goal line, goes up.
Oh, there it happened, I see what you're talking about.
So how far behind me are you, David?
I quit because it just wasn't any fun for me.
I mean, you just intercepted the ball, I was waiting for your response before I said anything. We just intercepted the ball back.
All right. Time was Jason today, obviously, so...
We had it on the thirteen, we ran the ball, now it's first and goal, the three. Mahomes, you know, that's special. What is the conversation?
Instead of first quarter?
Yeah, six twelve left in the first.
That was opening possession, that first one, first interception.
Yes.
Okay, I'm hearing no action taken, and I'm moving to go back into regular, uh, council session.
Excuse me, that was a motion to go back into regular session.
Second to motion.
Oh, sorry, sorry, yes, thank you, thank you, Bill. And there was a second, too.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, all right, are there any other others?
No others.
All right, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.